We'll call the meeting to order for Tuesday, October 1st, 2013. First item is the approval of the agenda.
I move approval.
Second?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Next item is citizens to be heard. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard on any item that is not on the agenda? Next item is employee recognition.
Is there a way to come to this microphone? I believe there is. Let me check on that. I did replace the battery in it, so it should work.
Miriam, why are you here? You're first. difficult for people to hear who are watching TV. And Miriam Danielson, will you come forward, please? Twenty years of outstanding service with Clay County, social worker in the Social Services Department. Thank you and congratulations.
Brad.
When you get to be my age, that will also help. Brad McDonald, Sein Foreman, Highway Department, fifteen years. Congratulations. Presentation of fifteen years of outstanding and dedicated service to Clay County and its citizens. Bradley, congratulations and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. And now, the Employee Excellence in Performance Club, Pat Boyer. You come forward. I'd like to read what he said about you. Pat Boyer, Supervisor of Adult Mental Health, Chemical Dependency, Elderly and Protective Services. Pat exhibits leadership, professionalism, and dedication to her role as a supervisor. She is also willing to assist her workers in any way possible. She is confident in addressing difficult situations and seeking a common resolution. Pat is one of the most exemplary supervisors under which I have worked. And I believe that's from Rhonda Porter. Okay. Pat? Congratulations and very proud of you. And the next person for the Excellence in Performance Club is Lan Seersen-Pastorian. Lan isn't able to be with us today. Lan is a great inspiration to others and always has a smile on her face. She is very positive to coworkers and is very friendly to visitors of the building. She is great at her job and we miss her when she has time off. She goes above and beyond her responsibilities, helping other coworkers with cleaning-related tasks and never complains. We're very fortunate to have not only Lan, but also everybody else who has commented today.
So move. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
They are paid. United Weight Campaign, Kim Savageo, Campaign Chair. Is Kim with us?
She is.
Pardon me. This, item number two, will be postponed until possibly next meeting. Kim was not able to be with us. Presentation by Clay County 4-H Seat Perch Team, and I'd like Commissioner Everett to make some comments, if you would please, before we have Lisa come up here.
Okay, well, I was back in the end of August. We always, the Advisory Committee for both the Citizens Advisory Committee for Extension and the AMC Extension Committee meet together, always at that meeting, the end of August, and we go to the state fair. But at the meeting before we went to the state fair, we had some presentations and some 4-H projects, and I was delighted to see that our team, the Seat Perch Team from Clay County, was one of the featured groups, and they just knocked the socks off the people in the audience. They did a super job telling their story, and I suggested that you come and share it with the rest of us, and they're here. So we will call on them now. Thank you.
Would you all come up here? And could a couple of you bring some chairs up from there?
They want to stand, I think.
Oh, okay.
I think so.
All right. Kim, pardon me, Lisa Casson-Bauer is here, and we would like each of you young men and the one young lady to introduce yourselves, if you would, please. And could you speak into that first mic to your right? And give us your names and what school you go to, and anything else you'd like to say.
Good morning. I'm Josh Doctor. I'm homeschooled, and I'm in ninth grade.
I'm Will Bauer. I'm in ninth grade and I go to Holly Public Schools.
I'm Nate Cobenhaver. I'm basically a junior and I'm homeschooled.
My name is Emily Doctor. I am a junior and I'm homeschooled.
I'm Eli Cobenhaver. I'm in seventh grade and I'm homeschooled.
Welcome, very much.
It'd be easier if you would just sit down while you're making your speech.
Sure.
Easier than handing over.
The history of Clay County, the history of Seat Perch in Clay County began in 2009. However, the history of Seat Perch began in 1997, when Dr. Tom Konce presented Seat Perch to the Massachusetts Institute of Technology for Ocean Engineering. Thinking it was a great way to get kids excited about science, math, and engineering, the MIT Sea Grant Group founded the Seat Perch Initiative in 2003, sponsored by Ocean Naval Research, and has spread to many schools and 4-H groups. As of the fall of 2011, the Seat Perch program is now managed by the Association of Unmanned Vehicle Systems International Foundation, AU VSI-F, and continues to expand internationally.
See, can we have you put that Seat Perch up here? There you go.
Will, you're on.
So, we, when we first got into the Seat Perch project, we started out with a simple Seat Perch, and we've now developed the Seat Perch into, we've added a camera, and we've dissolved oxygen sensors, and a water sample collector where we're testing pH, or, yeah, pH, and we're looking into litmus-like paper that can test phosphate and nitrate levels as well. We have a temperature sensor, too. We use iPads to mark the location on where we test on the lake or on the river, so we can go back to that same spot and see the changes. And two of the members who are not here, and I were able to go down to a training on Seat Perch, and we were able to learn a lot about water quality and build a few more perches, and later that summer, we were able to teach a class and build three more perches. And we go out two or three times a year with Bob Link, the Turtle Lake Association, and he brings us out on his pontoon, where we get to use all those adaptations and gadgets to Seat Perch to test water quality. We were also able to participate in the Hickson Dam removal on the Red River, and they do that because there's not enough room for a lot of animal or aquatic life to move around in the river, and we were able to release 500 surgeon finger lings to represent Clay County Seat Perch.
Thank you, Will. Nate? Good morning.
Good morning. So, as Will said, we just started out with the basic Seat Perch. That's what we have here. It's just three motors and a frame with a controller. So, that's just a little science project, basically, run it around a pool. So, we, over the years, we've been modifying and adapting this basic Seat Perch, so that we can use it for water quality assessment. We've got one perch that has a camera on it, so we can see underwater where we're going. I've got another one with most of our sensors on. We started out with just a very, very simple temperature sensor, and then started experimenting with a dissolved oxygen sensor, which is a little, it's more towards the water quality assessment part, because temperature alone doesn't tell you very much. So, our original design was, for that was very, very clunky and required about 50 pounds of ballast to keep the whole thing underwater, because we had the entire assembly encased in a big otter box. So, over the last year, we've pretty much been working on streamlining the designs. Now, we have another perch with all the sensors on it. They have got, modified it so that we have all the sensors on the bottom and all the detecting and logging equipment on the top. We've got currently the dissolved oxygen sensor, again, a temperature sensor, that's technically accurate to about a hundredth of a degree, actually. And the perch with the camera, and another modification we've been experimenting with is, we have LEDs on another perch at the corners, because one of the drawbacks of the perch is that when you're using it in under about 20 feet of water, no matter how clear that water is, you're still not going to be able to see the perch very well to maneuver it. So, we're hoping that the LEDs will give a little bit more feedback, so you can see where the perch is, basically, where you're driving it. Plan modifications for the future are upgrading the motors. The motors aren't particularly very good for this, really, when you're putting extra equipment on, and we've had some problems with them, especially not being able to surface it, having to pull it up by the tether instead of having it come up under its own power. So, we're looking into getting a little bit of an upgrade on the motors. And also, something I'm trying to look into is getting some way to tell the depth of the perch, so that we can tell at what depth we're taking the readings. I'm not sure how we're going to do that yet, but the planned modification for the future.
Thank you, Nate. Ms. Emily, good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
I work to the research side of research and development with Seat Perch this year. We planned quite a few little experiments, but due to complications, we weren't able to complete all of them, and so they've been put on hold for next summer. But some of the major things we planned to do was, we wanted to test the dissolved oxygen, pH, and temperature at the different levels of the lake we were studying, at different depth readings. And so, we were doing that, and we made a worksheet for ourselves, planned to graph it, and we wanted to develop a mathematical formula for the association there, to be able to use, to take, to calculate the different readings at the different depths of the lake while only taking a reading from the surface, so you wouldn't have to sit and lower it down more and then take the reading and haul it back up. Recently, also, we went kayaking on the Buffalo River with the International Water Institute, and they allowed us to help with the collection of shells and measuring mussels and stuff. That's all.
Thank you, Emily. It's Eli, right? Good morning.
Working on the Seat Perch Team has taught me many things about electronics and computers. For example, as Nate said, we just put LEDs on one of the perches. With Seat Perch, you also get to meet new people and work as a team to accomplish goals. Working on this presentation together is one example. Also, we presented our project to the family that has been funding our team. They allowed us to submit a proposal for more funding, so our project can continue. Seat Perch is just a lot of fun. I'm able to enjoy activities I wouldn't normally be doing, things like getting out on a boat in a lake, testing water quality, and building and modifying the perches. This summer, we took two trips to Turtle Lake to test the perches in the water, and, as Emily said, a couple of weeks ago, we went kayaking with scientists from the International Water Institute. Weather was great, 85 degrees and sunny. It was fun to explore the river and do some intentional and unintentional swimming, too. In conclusion, I think I can speak for the whole team when I say that Seat Perch is a great way to spend your summer and have some fun outdoors. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa, most impressive.
Well, we really appreciate, oh, sorry. We appreciate the opportunity, the presence of privilege. Thank you so much. And I do have to say that when we first started out, there was old 4-H Chair and I, he built one before, but I had to learn this on, I had to learn to bring the team along. They are totally on their own, we just provide guidance, but they are certainly far advanced and just have taken off. So, that really makes us happy from the youth development side, in addition to the engineering side.
Thank you. Kevin?
Yeah, I just find this fascinating, and I remember a couple of years ago when this was brought before us, and having some property on a lake, and we know the importance of water quality, and it always, it constantly has to be monitored, and I just see this as potentially something that a lot of other lake associations could use. So, you could also turn this in from a science and technology learning experience to a marketing experience for yourselves, because it has opportunities, because every lake has people on that lake who are looking for ways to monitor the quality of their water. And the more you advance this, the more interest there's going to be in lake associations to see what you have. Congratulations, very good.
Thank you.
I just was wondering if you could tell us, you know, more about the uniqueness of this. I mean, is this something that, for instance, the DNR have a similar equipment, that they can go down and check this stuff, or is this unique to where you are?
I know the roves, remotely operated underwater vehicles, that's something that has been the subject of a lot of research by the Navy for underwater operations, recovering ordnance lost at sea. I'm not sure about the DNR around here, but I know they, Minnesota, University of Minnesota, they built a much larger rove, and one of the design considerations for that was that it would be something you could put under the ice and then look for populations of invasive species with the cameras mounted on it.
The rovers are powerful enough to go against the current Mississippi River?
So, I think this is something that they're at least looking into, if they don't do something like that already, I'm not sure.
So, it sounds to me as if 4-H here is on the cutting edge of technology.
It's kind of.
Thank you so much for being here, and you all, five of you young folks, and Lisa are most impressive. Thank you. Great job. Darren, while you're sitting there with all your friends, we will go to community reports. And how about starting with the chief first today?
I just, Community Health Advisory in Brainerd last week, and General Business and Committee Reports and various committees that the Health Department has. That was it.
Kevin?
Okay, last week, we had a highway tracking meeting after the board, and, let's see, what top, what did we talk about there, Brian?
The County Road 95 discussion.
Oh, yes.
911 and then Saban four-way.
Yeah, they, oh, yeah. Yeah, there were, the County Road 95, that's where we, a few years ago, we put on this chip seal, base one and chip seal, and we found that it's not working quite like we had hoped it would, based on our research from Becker County. It lasted like 20 years in Becker County, and it's not working as well here, and I think it has to do with our clay soils versus their sandier soils there. So, this is all looking at how they, and Dave and Nathan were coming up with a plan as to how they were going to try to maintain that over the next couple of years, till we do the complete regrading and surfacing of that road. I think that's scheduled in '16 and '17, I think, or something like that. And the other issue was down in Saban, the city of Saban had requested four-way stops at the intersection in Saban, and looking at the warrants, usually those are justified by criteria, which they call warrants, and at this time, it didn't meet the warrants. And so, John and I and Brian talked with them, and we suggested maybe the alternative would be a, you know, a painting of a crosswalk and possibly putting up a yellow caution sign for this, with the little, did you see with the little stick person? That just indicates that there's, you know, people crossing those streets and that there needs to be caution. In addition to that, we put out the idea that if they wanted to also have those with those blinking lights attached to them, that runs into a little bit more money, and we thought that maybe we could work into, if Saban's interested, we could work into a cost share with them to add that, and that would be using the solar type technology. So, those were the two issues, and I think Dave and Nathan then were going to go back and talk with the city of Saban. And then, we also had asked Dave, back on the other, on the County Road 95, is to send a letter out to all the neighboring landowners as to what our plans were going to be over the next two or three years, to just keep them updated on what the plans were going to be for 95. So, that was it.
John?
One other thing on the highway tracking meeting that we had last Tuesday was the talking about the replacing signs for the 911, and that came as a surprise to me. It seemed like we just, just put out our signs, but it's already 10 years, I guess, that those signs are getting, some signs are already showing wear, and it may need to be replaced. Some of the reflective stuff is fading and so on. So, over the next while, we'll be looking at some kind of a program to replace signs that are needing replacement across the area. And some have been knocked down, some have been destroyed by, you know, snowplows and what all. So, it's time to at least try to make sure that they're in place. The, we had a SWAC meeting last Thursday.
I forgot.
And, well, you were there for much of it.
Being in the end.
Yeah, Kevin was there at the beginning and the end, but had to leave during the middle of it. There was a discussion about the whole contract that we're working on negotiating with Perm facility for taking fines and so on, and we need to do a lot of work on this yet. There's still, there's still some negotiating we need to do. We're going to meet after today and talk about that. But anyway, it's, the Advisory Committee is very intense about their work, and work are very concerned about giving us proper advice and so on, but we need to, we need to go back and talk about this more before we proceed, I think. The Lakes and Prairies Community Action met last Thursday evening, and of course, most of the talk there was about the effects of shutdown and sequestering and so on, and we featured that night, the, every time, one program was featured at every meeting, and it was head start this time. Such a great program and being challenged by funding cuts in every direction, so that's something we're very concerned about and trying to monitor. On the good side, there was a lot of grants for other programs that have come forward through to Lakes and Prairies, and we're excited about the growth of some of the other programs that are there. I spent a lot of time last week with the Historical and Cultural Society. We had a major German culture day on Saturday and dinner that evening, which was, the whole day was a great success. It's the first time we've had anything featuring German heritage, and we had, over a thousand people came in during the day to the event, and so we were very pleased with that for a first-time event. We thought it was very successful. We also were working, dealing with the main new exhibit that's being developed and working on the plans for the campaign to raise money for that project, so that's taking good business time. Yesterday, it was a Lakeland Board meeting, and pretty much routine business for Lakeland, and we, things are going well for them. Yesterday evening was the time with the Mindot Commissioner, and that, I thought, went very well, very positivity. Comes like many of the other commissioners, stop by Morehead and you have a chance to meet people and to listen to what concerns people have, and it was good. Of course, there's, they're limited by shortage of money, like all the rest of us in our work, so, but it was very, very interesting. And that's it.
Right?
I guess Wednesday morning, we had the county extension meeting. There, Lisa was introduced as the new 4-H coordinator and stuff, and that was a regular Extension Committee meeting, I guess. After that, I went down to Holly for the open house with their Cree Techs plant, which is a big project down there. I don't know if you ever, that south part of Holly is really taking off down there. It's just with RDO going to be developing Cree Techs going in there, they're looking at a hotel and stuff like that, so Holly is really expanding that area down there. Thursday, at Family Healthcare, and they are really moving ahead with, I mean, they're getting some grants. They got one grant to get for a million and a half, another grant for a hundred thousand, and they're, I mean, to support their, they think Obamacare or Affordable Healthcare Act is going to help them a lot as far as their operation, as far as people being able to pay for their, for their health stuff. They're also going to hold a health fair October 26th, want to find out what the healthcare thing is all about over there. And I guess I was at the transportation thing last night, too, and it was amazing, as they were talking about, sometimes we think we're not getting from the Minnesota Transportation Department, when they start naming off the projects that have helped us already, you know, when they start talking downtown Morehead, they start talking about Holly, they start talking about different projects, I mean, that have gone on around this area. I mean, we are getting a lot of benefit. I mean, we are getting a lot of benefit from the Minnesota Department of Transportation. It is now down at the cities and stuff. We were, they're doing a lot of projects in greater, greater Minnesota, and it was a very interesting presentation.
On Thursday, September twenty-sixth, I had Lakes and Prairies Board meeting. John has covered that. And last night, I was also at the commissioners gathering at the Yum-Con Center. Brian?
I have to take mine, too.
Kevin had one more.
I just wanted, I'd been at two meetings that have been addressed here, but going back to that extension committee meeting, we, we heard updates from our 4-H coordinator or nutrition and everybody else, and our horticulture and ag folks, they all gave really good reports. But part of the conversation that took place, again, came back to, we had to give an explanation about our budget and the request of a half position that did not meet. But we did have a conversation with them, and we told them that even though it's not in there, that, and I expressed John's concerns about it and wishes that we could find a way. So we talked a little bit about, you know, because they mentioned now that they're actually losing after-school programs in Holly and Barnesville as a result of this. And my first reaction was, here we go. Here, the things we're losing is out on the eastern part of the county, and just where they get upset with us a lot. So I talked a little bit about, could we better use some of our people who might be willing to serve while they're in the capacity as students in, in the colleges? And that could handle those after-school programs with some, with some sort of stipend other than a full fifty percent salary for that position? And so they were gonna, they were gonna look at that and see if there was the potential there. And I told them that I felt this board would still be open to something other than that in the event, if we could keep those after-school programs going. So it was kinda in their hands now, and I think, Brian, they might be touching base with you on that. It certainly would have to be something short of the thirty-some thousand they had talked about. But it gives them an opportunity to maybe try to, you know, if they can pay a stipend to some university students who are, that's their field, to get them out and get some, you know, training in the same respect, that would be good for both of us, so. The other thing on the solid waste meeting was Kathy did announce her retirement, and we did, for our solid waste advisory committee, did give her a plaque, you know, for, and thanking her for her years of service. She will officially be done, is it the twenty, it's the end of this month?
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first of this month. And then we, we have briefly discussed about how we might change that or what qualifications we might have for the next person who goes in and runs that solid waste program. And there will be more to come on that. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, Commissioner Campbell, you bring up an interesting point, and Commissioner Everett certainly was in on the discussion, too. I know Commissioner Gross is also on the, the Extension Committee. Just to touch on the budget just a little bit, Lori did come back to me with a approximate figure on the housing rebates that we may have to pay out next year, where we will have to pay out next year. And she said that she had been advised or forgotten about, or been notified that there was some multi, multi, I was gonna say multi-county, multi, multi-housing units that were put up in the Dilworth area and whatnot. So she said that the rebate is going to be more than what she had expected. In fact, she said it would be in about the twenty-five thousand range. Now, I have discussed this, or not this issue, but I have discussed with public health, with Kathy as to researching hers and, and because, if you remember, last year it was a five-hundred-and-some-thousand-dollar contribution, plus she allowed her the twenty, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to go into reserve if she needed, and she'll need about sixty thousand of that this year, I think it is. So I asked her to take a look at that, to see if there was any room there, and she does feel there is some room. So that, we feel we'll cover that twenty-five, that rebate with that. So we'll keep looking for some opportunities for the extension, and I think we'll find it if you, if that's your focus's desire. So that'll work. That'll work. First item I have is just to remind you that the Fall Township meeting will be November eighteenth, and it's going to be in Holly this year, out at the, is it Garrett Theater or something to, to that? So that's on a Monday again, usually in the morning from eight till about noon.
What, what, what date did you say?
November eighteen?
November eighteen.
And I know the Chair, Gary, had contacted Nancy Gunderson, our assessor, this week in regards to doing some things. And we did talk a little bit about, I think I talked with Commissioner Gross and Commissioner Everett about that, oh, a few months ago, about some education in regards to the valuation of lands and, and then that tax credit that, you know, that, that changed from one-point-two million to one-point-five million and how that affects their tax rate. Goes from point-five to one-oh once it exceeds one-point-five million. So we'll talk about that some more. We'll try to keep it relatively simple, but it's kind of a complicated issue, so. I did attend the Cree-Tex groundbreaking out at Holly, and how that ties in with the transportation that we talked about last night. The comment out at Holly was the fact that Cree-Tex probably wouldn't be building there had that, that intersection not been improved. And Cree-Tex, that's about a seven-million-dollar project with about twenty permanent jobs that's being created there. So, you know, when you talk about, and that's what it was all about last night, was how the transportation system ties in with business and, and different things. And, and on that note, the Commissioner Zeller, and I thought he came across as very down-to-earth, very easy to talk to, and, but he just, he threw out the, not the idea, he just threw out the fact that a ten-cent gas tax would really bring a lot of the projects that they need to do up to date. And then the question was, and I can't remember who asked it, but remember, we're border here with North Dakota, and please correct me if I'm wrong, if you guys heard this differently, but they said that there is an exemption, is it the Sloan or?
Senator Ekin said that, that there is, that if you're seven and a half miles within the seven and a half miles of the border, you, the most, the, the highest you could be over North Dakota is two, is.
Two cents where we're at right now.
Yeah, I mean, that's, we, we won't go, even if the tax goes up another dime, the seven and a half, within seven and a half miles of the border, it doesn't change. It'll still be two, two cents higher.
Yeah, and, and we're not promoting the ten-cent gas tax, we're just informing you that, that, that's what their response on it was for the Morehead-Dilworth area. Of course, it doesn't, I mean, that wouldn't have a positive effect on Barnesville and Holly, but I guess the further away you get from the border, the, the more important transportation issue as well, so. Anyway, I, I thought that was kind of an interesting part of it, but I thought an excellent presentation. I'm glad I attended that. Attended Highway Tracking, enough's been said about that. After, after we attended the Cree-Tex, we had been asked to meet with the township chair of Aglin Township, and Dave and I met with him, reviewed some road work out there. But he also was very, very prideful of the fact that, he showed us about fifteen new homes that are under construction out in Aglin Township. Talk about construction, boy, for, for a rural township, they had some beautiful country out there and some, really some nice homes going in. That's really gotta affect our tax base in a, in a real positive way. It was, it was nice to see that. So Dave and I spent some time with him. We had, of course, another diversion meeting, and, and we talked about that last week of what the changes were in different things. I attended the solid waste meeting, the SWAC committee on Thursday morning. That's already been covered. I did also tend a meeting over lunch here last Wednesday, I believe, or, yeah, Thursday. And it was the local demographics. We talked about it at the last joint powers meeting, that, that the school superintendents were gonna be, be presenting demographics on both sides of the, of the river and the growth and, and the diversity of their schools and the concerns, I don't say problems, concerns that they have in regards to addressing those issues. It was really interesting to, to see the, the growth patterns in the school systems within this region. And, and in fact, I heard yesterday that, that, which school did they close on the, an elementary school in Morehead here, that they may have to look at repurchasing, and I guess they're talking about that right now, and, and opening it back up because of the number of students that, that are involved. So things are really populating the schools again, so it was kind of an interesting trend. And we've heard a lot about the Fargo and West Fargo side of what they're doing with schools, but Morehead is experiencing it as well.
Brian, I think that the major change for Morehead school system is the, the addition of the full-day kindergarten. They need many classrooms for, just four-hundred-and-fifty students or something that showed up, so they need a lot of classrooms for them.
Yeah. Well, good, good. The, oh, I'll be, I'll be out the end of this week. We have our annual Minnesota Association of County Administrators annual meeting, and so I'll be out from Wednesday, about Wednesday noon through the end of the week. And also, the federal government shutdown, I have inquired to a couple of the agencies, of course, social services, to see what effect or what anticipate any problems that they have in the immediate future. And she says, Rhonda says, not in the short run, the biggest piece for social services would be maybe delaying payments in our Title Twenty block grants. I can't tell you what Title Twenty block grants are, but it'd be a delayed payment, not elimination of payment, in social services. In public health, it says here from Kathy, it said, "The only information that we have received, it pertains to the WIC services." And WIC stands for Women and Infant Children, I believe, you know, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a food program to help support pregnant women and, and infant children. But it says, "The state WIC program has sufficient funds to continue covering WIC services through the first week of October, including payments to cover voucher redemption, redemption." So in the immediate future, that probably shouldn't be a problem. And I did hear from, from Tom as well, Phil O'Gee, and he's going to be back to work or he wants to be back to work pretty soon, if you know, he's been out for a little while on, on some medical issues. And he has a concern, of course, for the veterans, and he just says that, as expected, the inquiries are already arriving in regards to the government shutdown. Please understand that although the VHA, and I think that stands for the Veteran Health Administration over here, is open for business, they made it clear that they will remain open for services, that the VHA does not affect the VBA, and the VBBA is the Veterans Benefit Administration. So he said, "As always, be sensitive. There are, are veterans when they call here about this." As it's very understandably, they are worried about the, what's going on with the system. So according to the Veterans Administration, the, the hospital and the administration office will be over, open across the street, or across the river, and the benefits will continue. So, you know, let's hope it's short-lived, and as, we'll, we'll keep in touch with our, how it's affecting our county operations, and we'll keep informed on a week, the week basis as to what's going on there, if it progresses and stays shut down, too, so. I think that's about covered it, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Anything else? We're adjourned.